Get started and invite Reverend Charlie Martin from Erlanger Christian Church.
I like Star Trek better.
Good, how about you?
Yes, oh, there you go.
I'd like to go ahead and invite Reverend Charlie Martin from Erlanger Christian Church to start out with our invocation.
God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to express our freedoms and to serve the people of this city. Help all on this city council to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. Give to all citizens of Erlanger a spirit of service and compassion. Help us all to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. In this season of joy and hope, renew us all with the strength of your presence. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. I now call the 2015 November, excuse me, the December 1st, 2015 meeting of city council to order. I ask that we all stand up and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Hoffman, can you please take roll call?
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
All right. Mr. Burke, can you please say you're here?
Am I here? Yes, sorry, I was...
You were in the middle of a conversation.
Thank you.
I just want the record to show that he is here. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes for the November 3rd, 2015 regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mrs. Kyle. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gary Meyer. Do I have, see, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. You've received a copy of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes at this time? I'll entertain a motion that we adopt, the motion as presented. Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Blankenship. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the special presentation for this evening. We've got a business spotlight. Mr. Simpson with Johnny's Car Wash, I believe. Mr. Hahn, are you going to introduce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we're pleased to have Jeff Simpson here today, owner of Johnny's Car Wash. They have been operating in our fair city for 50 years, so we invited him for our business spotlight tonight to just talk a little bit about their business. Jeff?
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I just, like I said, we've been in business for 57 years, 50 of them in the city of Erlanger. We started out in 1958 down in the city at Covenant with a hand wash my father operated, and he worked another job while he did that part-time. The following year, he opened the first automatic car wash in Northern Kentucky in 1959 on Madison Avenue across Mahomes High School. After several years there, he wanted to expand and moved out to the city of Erlanger in 1965, where we've been ever since. I've been involved since I was in high school, and after graduating college at Thomas More. In 81, I came into the family business full-time, and in 1992, I bought the business for my father, and we also operate the batting cage since 1979 in behind the car wash. But as any small business owner knows, it helps to have the good working relationship with the city officials and police and fire departments, and I want to thank you all for that, and hopefully I'm still there a few more years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a platform.
Congratulations.
Frank?
Thank you very much.
Should we get a picture out here?
Yes, please.
And there, turn around. Tammy, get a shot.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a service award presentation for Officer Sean Sims. Chief?
Well, it's Lieutenant Sean Sims now, and December 1st, 2015, we're going to give him his 20-year pen. On February 1st of 2016, he's leaving us for retirement, so we wish him well on that. Sean came to us in 1995 as a police officer. He was one of the original bike patrol units when that unit started up. He was the governor's DUI award recipient many years. He's been the detectives. In 2004, he was there for a few years. He's been a hostage negotiator for our SRT team since 2004. He's had over 13 successful talk-outs. He completed firefighter basic training in 2004, became an arson investigator in 2005, was a member of the Kent County Arson Task Force. It was a team that we had here in Erlanger in connection with our fire department for many years. Had some successful cases with that team. Patrol sergeant in 2005, then he attended the National Fire Academy in 2006, attended the FBI National Academy in 2009, and became a lieutenant with our department in 2013. He currently maintains our patrol schedule and implemented the BISSO program and the Wellness Initiative. He's been a chaplain with our department since 2012. This came straight from him. Share if you can put the picture up. His proudest moment was the implementation of Erlanger's first urban assault VIP unit. Sadly, it was disbanded due to the failed psych test after its first mission. I can't imagine why it failed.
Not all the projects can, you know, just soar.
So there's just a few of his accolades. Sean's been a valuable member of the police department for 20 years. We're going to miss him when he leaves. We could probably stand up here and talk about a lot of other stuff for a long time, but I'm going to let him have the floor at this point.
That's a mistake. Thanks for the memory, Sean.
It was fun. I got two minutes because my nickname is Wendy, so I will make a point, keep it short. I'm leaving here soon. I didn't think I was going to cry when I got up here, but this has been my life for 20 years, and you don't realize how much invested in it you are until you're leaving. And I'm a big crybaby, me and Todd, we're the biggest on the force. We cry at lunch. But no, I mean, 20 years, and it truly, there's something so special here. I have friends in law enforcement and other occupations that have been around forever, and they don't talk about their place where they're at like we do here. This is family. Greg Sandel gave me my shot, and he took care of me. And my bosses ever since, and my mayors, have taken care of me. Everybody here takes care of each other. This place is family. And while I may be moving on, I will never forget, and I will never, never forget that I'm still part of this family, and I love every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I know you will be missed. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. Got a few things going on and coming up. I'm sure a lot of you have noticed that the Dixie Highway repaving project is pretty well complete now, and I'm glad to see that that's gotten done prior to the cold weather, so thankful. I think we're going to talk a little bit later this evening about SD1, and so I'll refrain from saying anything until we talk about that altogether. We just completed our first municipal government academy. We had 17 people go through the five-week program. Seemed like a real success. We had a lot of positive feedback from that. A lot of that was put on by Becky, and now that Becky has resigned, not sure how we're going to carry that forward in the future, but I sure hope we can do that again in the future. It seems like there's a lot of people interested already in doing it and signing up for the next one. We still have the open seat on our board of adjustments, and my plan is to have a name that I can recommend at the December committee meeting, and then hopefully we can have a vote on that in the first meeting in January. The Norfolk Southern Bridge, I believe they're going to get a little bit of a report on that from Mr. Vioxx later. We've got a meeting set up with Toyota, actually, it's gotten changed to the beginning of January. That's our regular quarterly meeting with them. And since Kathy's not here, I won't worry about stealing her thunder. We've got our tree lighting ceremony scheduled for December 5th at the Train Depot Park. I hope everybody can attend that. And as a lot of you probably saw when you came in here, we've begun setting up the train display. That's going to begin to be shown on December 11th, and that'll run through the end of the month, so looking forward to that. That's our first time doing that. And that's, I had a few other things that I guess I'd like to talk about in a committee meeting. Being that we've got the holidays coming up, this may be pushed off to the January committee meeting, but there's a few things I guess I'd like to talk about prior to bringing them to a regular council meeting and to a vote. One would be, more I've been thinking about with our annual budget, we've tossed around the ideas of different ways of cutting taxes, the possibility of lowering the insurance premium tax. We're in a fortunate situation where the city has a fair amount of savings at this point, and that's good and that's healthy for any city. I guess I would like to get possibly a written plan, maybe from finance on that, from the finance committee, as to what is the goal? How much do we want to have, you know, how much in the general fund savings are we planning on having before we start to try to give some of that back to our residents? So that would be a budget goal I'd love to try to set. Another one that's come up here recently is one of our ordinances referring to in-home businesses does not allow customers to come to the house. And that's come up recently where I think we're seeing more and more businesses, you know, in-home businesses, more people working out of their home than we ever have. I think it's unreasonable for us to say that no customers can come to the house. While I don't want to have, you know, a convenience store being run out of a house, I think there's probably some kind of happy medium that we can find, and I'd love it if Mr. Gatlin can get together the ordinance that we have and maybe even look at some of the other city ordinances to see if we can try to come up with a modification to that ordinance. Okay, and that's all I have to discuss this evening. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Under reports and committees, our first committee is our public safety, the police. Mrs. Sudcamp, Ms. Kyle?
Congratulations, Sean. It's a good thing you waited till you're almost leaving. That's all I have to say about that, because I know people. I know, I know people. Okay, to make, this is very sad, but I'm sure that you all saw on the news about the murder of Officer Daniel Ellis down in Lexington. I wanted you all to know, however, Sean was talking about family, thousands of police officers from the tri-state area went to that funeral. So I thought that was very important, that you all know, you know, that they are family. We're all family. Recruit Hays graduated from the OCJT, I'm sorry, I never remember what that is. I mean, it's a recruit academy, but I don't know what all those letters stand for. And several staff members attended. Officer Hanes was recognized as being the class leader, gave a very good speech at the graduation, and received an excellent in physical fitness award. That's a lot of competition down there, I'm telling you. The Erlanger Police Honor Guard performed the opening ceremony at the Kentucky State FOP Conference in Covington. Officers assisted with traffic for the reinstallation of the new and improved caboose. Boy, if you weren't there to see that, that was something else. See that caboose come down with police lights and sirens, and all the kids were just insane. And here's this caboose on its big flatbed truck. It was wild. It was great. And this is something else that I don't really think people realize, and that's about our dispatch center. People just think of 911 and dispatch and calling the police, and they answer. They go far beyond that. We have phenomenal people that are put in that position, and dispatcher Lonnie Reese is one of many. She is also a crime analyst, and through her work and that of Justin Autton, who is one of our police officers, over 40 registered sex offenders were checked on in Erlanger, Elsmere, and Crescent Springs, because in their downtime, they're doing all this research for all these, you know, cities. So, you know, dispatch is far more than 911, and I felt that people needed to know that. Vicki?
Yes, we're planning, we have planning continuing for a Citizens Police Academy class to begin a 10-week program in January of next year, 2016, and I can attest, and so can Patty, she and I, and I believe Councilman Bill Howard, we were part of the first police academy, and it is awesome. You guys, you really need to attend.
It's a lot of fun.
You learn so much, and it makes you appreciate what these guys do. So we're proud of that. So if you can attend, please do so. And then also, about 12 officers attended a canned food drive at Silver Lake Kroger, and there was a pickup truck and an SUV full of groceries, and donations were collected, and we gave those to the Erlanger-Elsmere United Ministries. So we're proud of that fact. Also, this is a pet peeve of mine, out here on Baker and Commonwealth, we're going to have new pedestrian crosswalk signs. The police department protected these from the Kentucky Department of Transportation. You have to be very careful, especially early in the morning when it's dark. These children are going to school, Lloyd, Tishner, and they're crossing from Baker, and they're going straight across Commonwealth. When that light changes to green, you can't just race around the corner, you're going to hit one of them, you know? So, and I've seen people do it, and so I'm really happy that we're getting that taken care of. So watch the new signs. And then dispatch has instituted a new snow emergency contact list procedure. It's been updated and disseminated. New this year will include automatic notifications to various news outlets in addition to other city officials. So when we have a snow emergency, if you're parked on a street that is marked "snow emergency", please remove your car, put it in a driveway off the street so our plows can get through, especially on cul-de-sacs. And that is all I have, and I want to congratulate Officer Sims, Lieutenant Sims, and thank you for that lovely picture of Patty. I'll never forget that.
Even will I. And Cheepsen in the house.
We can't unsee that. Okay, the next item on the agenda then is fire and EMS. Do we have a report?
Yeah, just a quick report. We had, there was 281 incidents that were responded to, staying with our daily average of nine per day. The fire department hit a record for the year with 75 inspections in the month of November, and 510 students were reached through their public education efforts.
Okay, and Captain McQuerry is in the house, and he would like to talk to us about something.
I'll keep it short.
At the firehouse, we are collecting toys. I put something in front of you guys. The Steinford Toy Foundation has reached out to us to put a box at Station One at Central Headquarters. Anything collected through the toy drive is going to stay within Erlanger, so they have assured us any toys that we collect will go to Erlanger families. This is our first year doing it with them, I guess cooperatively. Last year, they did say that 32 families in Erlanger were able to receive toys through their foundation, so it's been around for about 90 years, and it's apparently very successful, so we're proud to partner with them. And if you know anybody that would like to donate, stop over to the firehouse.
Doors are locked over there for security purposes.
Right.
So would it not be better to have the drop-off here at the city building?
They reached out to firehouses because it's something, I guess, we're staffed 24 hours a day, so if somebody comes by at 8 o'clock at night, they can just ring the bell.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, we probably should tell people that, that you just can't walk in.
Right, just ring the bell, we'll answer. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Captain. All right, next up, we've got Public Works. Mr. Cahill?
Yes, so I'm glad to announce that today is December 1st, so the pothole lines are open today. But just to tell you what good work they've been doing ahead of time, just to highlight some of the report Mr. Bogart's given me, as of November, they've already filled 103 potholes, so that's pretty good for you guys, my colleagues, so please use it, they need the work, so anyway. We would like to keep the Skidmoors in our thoughts and prayers for the loss of Mr. Skidmore's mother this week, so they will be having services this Thursday, so we want to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. We also have the SD1 interlocal agreement. We are going to recommend that we proceed with it, with the litigation, with a $3,000 cap, and I'm making that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll say all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
And you received your report, and Mr. Bogart is in the house.
Nothing left.
Okay, get on that hotline, man.
All right, thank you. Next up is administration. Mr. Howard?
Yes, Mayor. Believe it or not, I have no legislation on my agenda tonight. Surprise. But I need to make a couple, a few announcements here, that the general government offices will be closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and on January 1st, New Year's Day. But the offices will be open on Thursday, New Year's Eve, December 31st, which will be the last day for property taxes before they become delinquent. Speaking of property taxes, in November, we collected $435,763 in taxes. For the tax year 2015, we've collected 3.8 million, still for this year, for 2015, there's still $433,554 that's still due for this year, and our outstanding delinquent total is $69,831. Just want to bring, give that information out to you all as well. I'll let you all know, you mentioned the tree lighting on December 5th. The library is having its holiday extravaganza on Sunday, December 6th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at the library. And also, the city Christmas, the city Christmas open house is Tuesday, December 15th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the Edgewood Senior Center. So that's all I got on my reports today. I think Missy's in the house. Missy?
All right, thank you. All right, next up is our Economic Development and Finance Committee. Mr. Blankenship, Ms. Pitts?
There was a finance committee meeting on November 17th. During the meeting, the audit report for fiscal year 2015 was presented. Staff has now begun work on the budget for fiscal year 2017. We'll be distributing a budget calendar to the mayor, council, and department heads in the next week or two. In addition to the budget request worksheets, will be sent to the department heads so they can begin the preparation of their proposed budgets.
Also, the staff has been speaking with the people at CVS. They're planning on starting their work at the end of January, beginning of February, and one of the tenants in the building at the corner of Dixie and Commonwealth have a lease until the end of January. Family Dollar will be starting its project at the end of this week by removing the existing structures on the property from McGalpin Avenue to the building, down to the building, the house of that tattoo shop, and that should remove some maintenance issues that the city's been dealing with there. And finally, Dave has been working with the business owners that are in the building that CVS was removing, and trying to find them new homes in Erlanger so we don't lose any of those businesses.
All right, thank you. Next up is codes, building, and zoning. Mr. Dunhoff, Mr. Burke?
Okay, it's a report on 11/17, committee meeting report, planning commission decision. On November 5th, 2015, the Kent County Planning Commission held a public hearing on two Erlanger requests. Number one, a request for the text amendment to amend language within the IP3 zone and the IP4 zone, eliminating the requirement which prohibits outdoor stories, and to increase the buffer zone minimum requirement between industrial zones and residential zones. The KCPC recommended approval of this request. The committee's action is to make a motion that the legislature be prepared to agree with the Kent County Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the request. The second one was a request for a MAP amendment to change the zone of 30, 33, and 37 Kenton Land Road from IP1 to IP4. The Kent County Planning Commission voted to recommend disapproval of this request. The action by the committee, make a motion to override the Kent County Planning Commission's recommendation of disapproval and request the legislation be prepared to change the zoning of the property in question from IP1 to IP4 for the following reasons. One, Erlanger City Council has reviewed the record of KCP's public hearing, and the KCP record did not cite any of the findings necessary, either supportive or not supportive, for MAP amendments required by KRS 100.213. And C, Erlanger City Council reviewed the PDS
Next up is Codes, Building, and Zoning, Mr. Dunhoff, Mr. Burke.
Okay, it's a report on eleven-seventeen Committee Meeting Report, Planning Commission Decision. On November fifth, two thousand and fifteen, the Kenton County Planning Commission held a public hearing on two Erlanger requests. Number one, a request for the text amendment to amend language within the IP three zone and the IP four zone, eliminating the requirement which prohibits outdoor storage, and to increase the buffer zone minimum requirement between industrial zones and residential zones. The KCPC recommended approval of this request. The committee's action is to make a motion that the legislature be prepared to agree with the Kenton County Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the request. The second one was a request for a map amendment to change the zone of thirty, thirty-three, and thirty-seven Kenton Land Road from IP one to IP four. The Kenton County Planning Commission voted to recommend disapproval of this request. The action by the committee, make a motion to override the Kenton County Planning Commission's recommendation of disapproval, and request the legislation be prepared to change the zoning of the property in question from IP one to IP four for the following reasons. One, Erlanger City Council has reviewed the record of KCP's public hearing, and the KCP record did not cite any of the findings necessary, either supportive or not supportive, for map amendments required by KRS one-hundred-point-two-one-three. And C, Erlanger City Council reviewed the PDS staff report, which provides a favorable recommendation for the map amendment, and the KCPC record does not offer any contradictory testimony to said staff report. And D, the proposed map amendment is in, is consistent with the goals, objections, and the recommendations of Direction two thousand and thirty. And E, the IP four zone will allow for more diverse types of operations within the area in question. This greater range of uses supports Goal Three and Objective C's intent of being more business-friendly to attract and retain jobs. And F, the IP four zone will allow the continued use of the areas for industrial uses that have good access to the interstate highway system and/or rail system, good proximity to urban development, and a full range of urban services. And G, the proposed map amendment is consistent with the recommended land use map within Kenton County's Direction two thousand and thirty Comprehensive Plan, which identifies the area in question for industrial uses. The proposed rezoning will allow for industrial development in an area identified for industrial uses. The ordinance that was prepared by Frank Wickman will have the first reading tonight. Now, I know we've had a lot of going on about what's going on over there. I went over there today and visited the business itself, and there's no issues that I can see that would stop us from doing this. And then I went over on Summit Drive, and I couldn't see any issues from over there that would be alarming to, to, to what's going on. So, that is our recommendation. We will have the first reading tonight.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I did exactly the same thing. I drove the whole thing, drove over on Summit, because I'm very, very cognizant of the, it's a beautiful neighborhood, you know, and I don't want to, wouldn't want, if it was my house, I wouldn't want to look out the back door at something of trousseau. It's not at all. You, you can't, you can't see the pallets from Summit at all, but you can sure see them from Kenton Land's Road. And it's an eyesore, it's a total eyesore. Now, my recommendation would be that the pallets never be stacked any higher, nor the box storages, nor any higher than the building itself, because you're not going to be able to build a fence two-hundred-foot high, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So, that would be the only thing, you know, I, I think it needs to be done.
But overriding the recommendation would just allow storage wherever on that lot, correct?
As long as it was shielded from view.
Yeah.
It has to be shielded from view from the right-of-way or adjacent properties.
And if it's not-
So, that takes care of the height thing, if there's a height.
I thought the height was already included, right?
There was a height of, yeah, it's still, it's visible, it's visible.
And the ordinance it is.
So, then it would be a violation that we would enforce on our side.
I do think we've got quite a few citizens that are interested in speaking about this tonight, so I would ask that we go ahead and delay, you know, talking more about it until we get to the, the point where they can, they can-
Oh, that's fine, sure, that's fine.
Okay, so, we can have more of an open dialogue then. I believe we also have, I think we also have representatives from the company here, too, that can help clarify some of that for us as well. So, I think if we can do that all together, that would probably work better. So, that, that'll be under the Citizens' Public Comments section.
Are we postponing the motion until after Citizens' comments?
Please.
You made a motion, Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, made a motion.
Oh, okay, so, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I guess, are we, are we making, I guess, another motion to postpone-
Just to have the first reading.
Motion to have the first reading of this this evening?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Okay, so I guess we do, we will discuss it if we, if you'd like. Got a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Nay.
Got three nays.
Who are the nays?
We've got Mr. Cahill, Mr. Meyer, and Mrs. Skidmore. The ayes have it. Motion carried.
And that's all I have in the report. Do you have anything?
No, sir.
And Mr. Hans in the house. Okay, that's it.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Progress and Revitalization Committee. Mrs. Pitts, Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, actually, we have the logo discussion that we had last week. We had a recommendation, however, during our retreat, we also had some more discussion. So, I think we'd like to table this, take this back into committee and discuss it further.
Okay, you've heard the reports of the committees. Do I entertain a motion that we accept as adopted, or adopted, presented, excuse me? Looks like we've got a motion by Mrs. Kyle, a second by Mrs. Pitts. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, the next is our reports of representatives. Are there any reports from our representatives this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. The reports of city operations. Mr. Vioxx, do you have anything to report?
Yes, sir. The mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that I was going to report on the condition of the progress of the underpass. Mr. Bogart and I did meet with two representatives of the Highway Department on Monday morning and to discuss what they might be able to help us with. If you recall, when I made, suggested that they had agreed to assist us some months ago, that assistance was in the form of helping us with the traffic management process, along with inspecting the underpass and giving us some recommendations. And they did not commit to spend any dollars at that particular point. However, when I, we met with them Monday, we talked about those conditions of the underpass, more specifically, the masonry part of the underpass, and the leakage of, of effluent from behind the walls and through the weep holes that were causing a condition that was very, somewhat dangerous to pedestrians walking through the underpass, and it's been a policing problem for the Public Works Department. And one of those solutions is that we're going to get a proposal from one of our contractors that we currently use, in fact, it's the contractor that did our work out here at the interchange, to actually cut in a drain system along the face of the walls under the underpass, so that any effluent from rainwater or from the ballast in the, in the tracks that comes through the cracks in the walls and can't be handled by the weep holes, that may or may not be plugged up from over sixty or seventy years of the existence of the underpass, that can be collected next to the wall and not create the wet condition and slimy condition that there for the pedestrians to walk through. In fact, when we were standing there, there was a jogger came through, and we stepped back, but I'm surprised he could stand up. But we're getting proposals, or these cost estimates, so we can incorporate that into this. We talked to them about the signage, and the, they committed to save on our painting cost, because our painter would have to put back the striping and these safety measures on the painting of the abutments. They agreed to allow our sign department in the city prepare signs that actually can be posted on the walls after the fact, that will actually last a lot longer than the paint, so we've solved that issue, we think. And the Highway Department has committed to replace all the safety lightings on the, on the underpass. They're kind of antiquated, and they said, while we're doing this, they're going to have traffic blocked anyway, that they felt that they could come in at the same time and replace the lighting. They were going to talk to their similar people in their maintenance division about the drainage coming through the superstructure along the walls, to see if there might be some way to deal with that, so they're going to get back to us on that. And they also informed us that they had taken the mayor's information relative to the painting specifications, and they had forwarded them to Frankfurt, and they expected to hear back before the, before Christmas as to whether the Highway Department has any issues with our painting specifications. So, we are moving forward. The mayor asked Rick yesterday, I think, if we got any money out of them, we didn't get any money.
[laughing]
But we did get, we did get, we did get some assistance on some of the facilities down there, so we are making progress, and I don't think we're being stonewalled. That's all I have, sir.
Jim, was there any discussion about lighting underneath the bridge?
No, but we can certainly bring that up to them.
Yeah, I think mostly in the walkways is where people complain about that.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
And then, would your impression be that the drainage corrections underneath, would that, do you think that work will exceed twenty thousand dollars?
I don't know that, but we're going, we're going to get an estimate from a contractor.
Okay, that's a good place.
Oh, I didn't miss two other points. In the, in the discussion with them, we also pointed out, and this, this came up with the meeting we had with the resurfacing and renovation of the highway, the crosswalk at Erlanger Road is very dangerous. And in fact, the sidewalk that comes out from the underpass exits into the traffic lane, and you have to actually walk on the highway to cross. We had a plan, this goes back almost five years ago, I guess, David Hahn was incorporating it in some, into a grant application to transfer that pedestrian traffic up the slope in a serpentine method to get it up to the intersection of Crescent Avenue, and then cross at the intersection of Crescent to come across above the intersection of Crescent, so they didn't have to cross by the highway at all. We pointed out to them that we had a plan like that, and we hadn't been denied grant money in the past about it, but they said they would support us in that request to get some assistance. They didn't say we were going to get it, but they said that they would help us. Secondly, we all recognized that the intersection, traffic movement there, which some of the older council members might remember, we made it a no-left turnout some years ago, but the reason we didn't, we made it, we didn't make it right in and right out only at that time was because the bus circuit went to Dixie Highway, up Commonwealth Dixie Highway, and made a turn down Erlanger Road. But since that time, they've changed the bus route, so it now comes up Commonwealth, goes down Elm Street, hits Erlanger Road, comes around by the Baptist Church, where I guess they have pickup people that can park in that lot, comes back out on Home Street, so they know, there's no longer a need to have a left-turn movement there. We also, before we'd extended Crescent Avenue back to Kenton Lands, that used to be the route for Tate, to get their brick activity coming from the Tate facility there down to the Brickyard, but that Brickyard doesn't exist anymore. And David tells me that he actually had, had some conversation with Boone Kenton, and they wouldn't be opposed to right in and right out. So, we've asked the Highway Department to consider making that a right in and right out, so we don't have that traffic stopping on the slope, waiting to get across the intersection into Erlanger Road, which actually backs up traffic to Commonwealth. So, they agreed to support that, too. That's all I have, sir.
Wonderful, good job.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gatlin, do you have anything to report?
Just briefly, on the SD one litigation that was approved tonight, right now, there's a draft circulating amongst the cities that are all kind of joining on board with us. We plan to have it filed by the end of the year. I'll circulate that draft with council prior to filing it, and we look forward to hopefully reaching an amicable resolution with SD one on it next year, if we're really, really overly optimistic.
We are.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wickman, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, Mayor, most of the activity recently has been in regard to the process by which the recommendation of the Planning Commission should be considered. I've given you all my recommendations. I'm not promoting passage of an ordinance or not passage of an ordinance, or doing the map amendment at all. That's not my job, that's your job. But what I have been trying to inform you is the proper way in which that should be done, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any questions in regard to what has been emailed to you in the last week or so.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Fields, anything to report?
I got a couple things. I guess I'm understanding Mr. Cahill right in tabling the logo discussion. The one designer did reach out to me today, asking for some direction about which way to go. I would just tell him that where it's going to be further discussion after the beginning of the year.
Correct.
Is that good? Okay, all right. Last night, I see Mayor Meyer in the, in the audience. Got my first meeting with the Kenton County Governance Committee. It was enlightening. I know Mayor Meyer's been sitting on that for quite a while, and I guess Tim Williams has too, for quite a while. Last night, there was another committee inside that put together, I believe a group of five, was put together to look at a, maybe a new form of government, to come back with some kind of draft of what that would be, and, and let the, that's going to be reported back in February. I believe they're going to have some meetings, but they finally made a decision about looking at, you know, forms of government instead of maybe services and concentrating on services. I think the first few months of this committee has been based on services and not actually the form of, of government or making any kind of changes to the forms of government inside Kenton County, you know, going forward. And I think that's probably what the committee was tasked with at the beginning, and they got bogged down maybe just a little bit with service delivery instead of, instead of that. So, I think it's back on track, we're looking forward to that, so it won't be until February that that comes back preliminarily about maybe what something could possibly look like. And I think something to remember about this whole thing is, you know, Louisville and what they just went through in Jefferson County, Lexington that went through it in, in the seventies with Fayette County, and then in the late seventies, they had legislation passed that created those forms of government. There may not be anything on the books right now, there was talk last night, you know, in the Constitution, you know, and the forms of governments that we have today, the early eighteen hundreds, it was passed, and that's what we're still living with today, the rest of the counties and, and the cities and the way it is in Kentucky. So, they, they carved those out in those other jurisdictions, so that may be something that they're looking at, to maybe propose legislation to give, to give counties like Kenton, and maybe other counties similar to size, some more options to look at, other than what is, what is there today. That was good news, I thought. I've given you all a report about the planning session that we had. Take a look at that, get back with me. I've put four big ideas or big projects from two thousand and sixteen on there. If in fact you disagree, or you have other ones that you would like to add on that for us to look at in two thousand and sixteen, please let us know, because I think starting the budget process here in February, we need to be focusing on those and what those are. Feel free to give me any feedback, please, on any of that, if you see anything. I did, I did try to take some of the categories, and I put some of those things together. I moved one, some things that were, you know, internal and external, I moved some of those around, so when you look at it, just give us feedback. I'll also share it with you electronically, but I wanted you to have a hard copy on that one. We have had several openings here in the last few months inside administration, and part of this goes along with what we're trying to accomplish when we're looking at realigning resources and, and doing some things. That's going to continue for us in the upcoming month. Missy, Greg, Dave, and I have all been working very hard on trying to come up with what, you know, this is going to look like inside administration. What we would like to do is have a committee meeting in January to propose what changes that, that, you know, we see would be jobs, job descriptions, all of those things that go along with that, what it, what it would look like, or what it could look like, and what we would propose to you for that change. So, like to do that in January, if we could, and I know that's, that's pushing it, and we probably got a lot going on with whatever the other things we want to talk about in January. But I think if we could have that meeting in January to talk about that, we also, if they're going to be adopted, new job descriptions, we need to get them adopted, and we need to get them passed an ordinance, and we need to get them to, to Frankfurt, and especially the retirement system, so we can have those, those in place, so if y'all indulge us in January, we'd greatly appreciate it. And that's all I have, sir. Oh, there's one thing, is Lieutenant Sims still here? Lieutenant Sims? I have to say one story, because the chief let you off. And he said he made a statement about you being the first bike, bike unit, the bicycle unit that we had. I'm also going to tell you this, that, that, that training goes around the state of Kentucky, the state of Ohio, Indiana, they train officers in all three states. And Officer Sims at the time was the very first officer that actually did a header over the bike-
Oh.
-and broke his arm and hand. He holds that distinction. It was a record on distance, and they actually said he broke it. So, that was a story that we just had to tell. And if you knew him, he, you know, Sean goes a hundred and ten. And if you knew him, Sean goes 110, if there is such a thing, percent, all the time. And that's the way he went about that. And when he came back in here and we said, why are you trying to kill yourself? What are you trying to do? But he holds that record. And Sean, we will miss you, and thank you for all the years you have been a joy to be around for 20 years.
That's great. All right, thank you, Mark. All right, you've heard the reports, the representatives, city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we accept as, or adopt as presented? I have a motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mrs. Sudkamp. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next up is correspondence. Mrs. Hoffman, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. So then we'll move on to the citizens' public comments. We've got a number of people signed up to speak this evening. We usually try to keep it to, I was gonna say two minutes, but yeah, three minutes. We try to keep it to three minutes. I just asked, please don't make us start timing. The first one up here is Terry Jamison. Did I say that right, Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for listening to all of our concerns tonight. I'm Terry Jamison. I live at 119 Summit Drive. I'm pleased to hear that some of you council members drove by and took a look at our street. However, driving by and living behind the airport towing is two different things. I live directly behind airport towing. I think it's been a mistake to have them at that zoning IP4. I would recommend that you reconsider for the residents, people living there. And one, living right directly behind, I have a few pictures that I've taken from my bedroom window, what it looks like as of today, if I'd like to pass those to you. I do not believe this is very compatible with a resident property backing up to this and making it an IP4. The reason why is, one, visually, it's an eyesore. When the leaves are down, like right now, the leaves are all down, you can see into the airport towing. And at midnight, all hours of the night, every night, weekends, you hear the tow truck come in, you see the lights, you hear the cars and trucks being set down on gravel. We can see the pallets, or the pods, so to speak, from our backyards. So it's very noisy. I've even had a raccoon problem in the last five years, opossums, and I do believe it's because of the storage of the cars that are behind the property where I live. It's quite loud. It's visually, like I said, when it's winter time, you can see it. So if I were to try and resell my property, which I know I bought there, but it wasn't zoned that when I bought, I don't think it'd be an easy sale. I would recommend that the council reconsider and keep it at the zoning, based on also, the planning commission voted not to recommend this change for, also because of the clutter and the sound and noise. I'd like, for in the spirit of goodwill, for the city of Erlanger and the city of Crestview Hills, for you to reconsider and not make the zone change.
All right, thank you, Terry. Thank you. Next up, we've got Randy Ockden.
Good evening, Mayor Hermes, City Council, Erlanger. First time I've ever been in the city building. I know it's pretty old by now, but it's beautiful.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate the, you know, the prayer tonight and the eloquence that I feel here tonight, the nice state of Kentucky, Erlanger, Crestview Hills, right there in brotherhood. Can't get any better. The officer tonight made a statement that I thought was taken to heart, and that is, we stand behind each other. We got each other's back. I'm not feeling the love here. None of us want this. You wouldn't want it. Mr. Dunhoff, do you live next door to industrial zone property?
No apartments.
Okay, that's not the same. That's also human beings living there. They're not working there. They're not driving trucks in and out, loading pilots. This time of year, the leaves are off the trees, as you know. We can see very well. Sherry, did you, were you able to get that up on the screen?
No, I looked in my email, and it didn't come across through my, let me check my.
Okay. Well, I don't have a lot of time, and I'm not a public speaker, but you kind of forced our hand. None of us want to be here tonight. We all want to be home with our families, as you do, too, I'm sure. But, you know, we have to stand up. When people are gonna put on their spurs and run over top of you, you have to stand up, and that's what we're doing tonight. You know a zone change is gonna increase the value of the property in Erlanger. It's gonna make the taxes go up. We understand that. But the other side of that is, it's gonna make our property values go down. Does anyone have any question about that? That you're gonna make our property go down in value? So you're in agreeance with that?
I don't know that.
Well, it is.
I don't know that I can speak for anybody, and I don't know that it's gonna raise our taxes either.
Well, it's more concentrated industrial zoning, so you're gonna get a higher benefit to your tenant. He's gonna be able to make more money on higher zoning. Just makes sense. And our mayor, Paul Meyer, is here tonight. He stands with us. We're asking you to reconsider, you know, and if you have any question about the value of our property going down, look at it like this. When an appraiser does an appraisal on one of these houses on Summit Drive, he uses the whole neighborhood of Crestview Hills as comparables. So if somebody's living next door to an I-4 zone, and in that zone, if I'm not mistaken, you can put a railroad spur and actually drive boxcars behind our house. Isn't that true? Yeah. So none of us want this. You wouldn't want it. Nobody up here wants it, and behind their house. If we have each other's back, city of Erlanger, city of Crestview Hills, we love you. Take care of us on this, all right? Look out for your neighbor. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Randy. All right, next we've got James Brown. All right, thank you. And then we've got Bob and Paula Gerding.
My name's Bob Gerding, and this is my wife Paula. We live at 111 Summit Drive. We want to thank you, city council, for letting us come in and speak this evening about this zoning change. One of the things, you know, and I echo all my neighbors' sentiments as well, but one of the things that you may not be aware of is that Duke has been back through there taking out dead trees, dead ash trees that were taken over by the Ember Ash Board. So as a result of that, the view has become very clear of the building itself and the storage containers with the advertising on the storage containers, and also the increase in noise. So from our standpoint, you know, it is gonna be something that's gonna potentially decrease our property value.
Well, and I've driven by a couple of different times. We're up and down that road all the time. The traffic that, we're talking about Kenton Lands, the traffic has already increased because of the towing and because of the skid area that they have. It's very congested right where they're keeping all the storage. The units that they have outside, they do have advertising on it. They are as high as the building. I took pictures today, which is interesting that today, from yesterday to today, they've removed some of the taller skids, so it's not right up as top as, high as the building. They should be concerned for a safety aspect for their company. I'm surprised that they're doing that. Another thing that we've noticed is that we are so close to this high school, and we keep seeing more and more students meandering back behind the skids, the storage units over in the towing area. I mean, we've made the comment that we are so close to the highway, and that's what makes it so, for these investors to come in and want to have their businesses there. The other thing that likes to be close to the highway is heroin. And the type of people that we are seeing hang out up there is just hiding, coming out of the woods, it's already starting to increase. So I would ask you, for several reasons, for, you know, just the eyesore that it is, which you guys have done a beautiful job, and we need to commend you on the beautification process that you've done to your city, I mean, to your pavers, to the road pavement that you've done. I mean, it's just, it's beautiful. And then as you turn up by the library, I mean, it's like really just, I mean, it looks like, you know, Erlanger's always had a big heart, and it looks like, wow, man, you could tell that you're really investing into your city. So when I heard that you were gonna do this, I was like, wow, that's kind of, you know, different path than I thought that you were taking. But I am very concerned about, like I said, the eyesore, the aesthetics of it, the traffic, what I perceive as a hotspot for drugs and kids, just coming through the woods, coming places that you can hide. So, you know, let's take care of our future here of our children. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Bob and Paula. All right, next up, we've got Matt O. You might need to help me with the last name. Okay, thank you.
That's Matt Ologes, for the record. Thank you, mayor and council. I just want to start off by saying I'm really jealous. I'm a council member in the city of Bellevue, and while it's not dire straits down there, seeing this wonderful building and the fact that you've got a surplus, that you're thinking about giving some back to your residents and just a great atmosphere here, I am certainly jealous. But I'm here tonight to talk about the zone change. I am with Zala Companies. We're one of the owners of the facility. You heard this gentleman, I missed your name, I'm sorry. John presented a lot of the facts about what has been supported and approved by other zoning and governing bodies. Some of the folks from CAMPs will be up to speak next, so I'm not really going to get back into that, but I just wanted to point out the fact that we bought this building in 2009. Prior to that, the building had been vacant for five years. The roof was falling in. The amount of money that we spent to purchase the building, we spent more than double that improving the facility. I think we've got a proven track record of, you know, increasing the overall good luck of the property. We certainly wouldn't stop that program of, you know, enclosing pallets or whatever that the neighboring houses would be potentially looking at. I know there's some difference of opinion as to whether they'll see it or not. Again, the folks from CAMPs can address some of that, but I just wanted to point that out. Up until CAMPs came, I think we were vacant for eight months before that, so if we are going to retain good clients that are going to, you know, contribute to the tax base of the community, we need this zone, this zone change, and I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, we've got Joe Connolly.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Joe Connolly. I represent CAMPs Pallets. CAMPs has been in business for about 40 years. We've been in the Erlanger area for a little over a year and a half now. We started out with six employees, and we now employ 20 people. Company-wide, we do about $120 million in sales a year. This year, we're projected to do about $4.5 million in sales, so the tax revenue that that will bring into Erlanger is definitely beneficial to everybody here. As far as the storage units and the towing company, I can't speak to that. I can speak to what CAMPs does and how we do things. And here, I've got some pictures for you guys to share throughout the committee. You'll see that this is not only important to Erlanger, but this is important to CAMPs. One of the residents mentioned safety. Safety is definitely a huge concern for us in what we do. Every day, we have safety walkthroughs and safety checks that are completed every single day. I'm not sure who said it, but somebody said that pallets were stacked as tall as the building. We don't have that capability with the machinery that we use, so I'm not sure if they meant the pallets or they were talking about the storage units. But we understand that the risks that come involved with stacking pallets that tall, as you can tell by all the pictures there, there is definitely an order to how it's to be done to make sure that things are safe for not only the people that are walking around it, but the people operating the machinery to grab those pallets or put them down. We definitely have made improvements to the building as well by putting in security systems to make sure that if anything does happen that's not supposed to, we would know about it pretty quickly. We've also been in close touch with the police department and have them do a door check for us as well. So we are aware that things do happen in cities, but none of that is what we want. We just want to be able to do business here. There's been some concern about noise late at night. Again, I can't speak to what other companies in the area are doing. We do not run a second shift. We are finished every day at 3:00. There may be some staff or office personnel in the office after 3:00, but none of our builders are there past 3:00. We do not work Sundays, and if we were to work a Saturday, as late as it would be, it would be 12:00. So as far as the noise goes, I can't really speak to too much beyond the 3:00. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
There's a question. How tall is this?
The track is approximately 3 and 1/2 feet tall.
About 18 feet then?
There's only two left.
Not 18 feet?
All right, thank you. Next up, we've got Bruce Clemmons. Clemmons, thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council. I'm Bruce McClemmons. I'm the planning manager for CAMPs Pallets in Erlanger, Kentucky. Pretty much what they've been saying is true. We start at 6:30 in the morning. We work till 3:00 in the afternoon. We have 16 cameras that are around our facility, record 24 hours a day, store for 30 hours. We are also the designated safe zone for the high school right behind us, so if anything happens, they come over to our facility so we can house them and make sure that they're safe, everybody knows where they're at. It is not our intention to be stacking pallets as high as you see in some of those pictures. It's more of our intention is, this is an ebb and flow business, and when we're getting ready for retail season, Christmas now, our inventories will swell, and when they swell, we have to be able to put them outside. 45,000 square feet is what we lease. 25,000 of that is just for pallet storage. The other 20,000 feet in the front is predominantly production. We run 20 guys out of there. We have a truck parking lot outside, and there are times when we can't process all the trucks that are coming in, especially this time of year, that we have to have the ability to stack the pallets outside in a neat and organized manner. We've got quotes on privacy fences for the front of the property, the back of the property. My understanding is a lot of the houses are actually down below the sightline coming up. They may see the tops of those pods and everything that are back there. But again, our intention is to keep the pallets under the 8-foot privacy fence that we've been looking to get. It's consistent with what our neighbors have. And if you've got any questions about operations or any of that, I'm the guy to ask. I run it every day, five days, five and a half days a week. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we've got Mayor Meyer.
Thank you, mayor and council, for letting me speak tonight. I guess one of the issues that I hear tonight is, sounds like the company's already storing this material, so why does a zone change need to occur? If they're already doing it, it sounds like they're, unless they're in violation. If they're already doing it, it sounds like they're, unless they're in violation. And doing a zone change to put someone compliant doesn't seem the proper way to do it. The other thing, the concern about when we, the airport towing came in at the time, that was kind of, the city was aware of that, and it's what my city administrator calls, the nose got under the tent. You know, any of these issues that we are talking about tonight can be expanded. In other words, maybe this, the Palm Beach building, maybe won't have towing today. But if you allow that zone change, it could be towing tomorrow and could have a 24-by-7 operation. Also, I noticed in some of the information, and Dave Han may have to clarify this, if you go to the IP4, you have to go to buffer zone D, which I think requires a 100-foot landscape area, which identifies in your zoning, identifies plantings. And I guess, is this company willing to put all that landscaping in if they're going to be, if it's going to go to IP4? So those are some ideas, I thought. The building, I don't think the building's 50 foot tall, is that correct?
About 20, 28.
Okay, so the question, other question that came out to Planning Commission is, height cannot exceed 50 foot. But the question came up, well, what is the maximum height that you can stack pallets and your storage containers? And they didn't know from your zoning. And the question is, well, the maximum building height's 50 feet, so how high can they go? So I think if you do something like this, you have to make sure that they buffer zone Z, and also maybe you limit the operation, and also make sure that they, you have something in your zoning that limits the max height of the storage facilities.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Han, do you care to address that at all as far as the buffer zones and the requirements of the buffer zone? Excuse me.
Unfortunately, I can't right now address the buffer zones as I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me to see if what Mayor Meyer says is the proper buffer zone we have to have. I know that when we applied, we spoke with the folks, the city administrator at Crestview Hills, and from the PDS staff, they mentioned about the setback requirement for things in this area, and they said it was 40 feet. Mr. Williams, the city administrator, suggested that that be 50 foot, so we amended that to comply with his request that it go from the 40 to the 50. I would have to check the zoning regulations to see just what buffer would be required. I can't address the screening somewhat that Mayor Meyer discussed, that, you know, in that particular zone, in that industrial zone, the maximum height of a fence is 8-foot tall. So therefore, we would enforce that nothing could be stacked higher than that fence, that 8-foot, as far as the screening is concerned. So would anything of the outsourced storage could not go above the required screening. So, and that's what we would enforce.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next on the list, we've got Mike Shepper.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come up and speak. My wife, Beth, and I live on 106 Summit Drive, and we are across the street. At our front door, we see everything. We're across from the tennis courts. One of the premises, for the reason why I'm up here tonight, it was explained to me that the zoning change from a 1 to a 4, and correct me if I'm wrong, does this allow more entities on this property to pay taxes, i.e. more businesses?
All right. Not to my knowledge, no.
Oh, okay, because that was, it was explained to me, and if that were the case, I'd be more concerned about, I hear dumpsters dumping well before 6:00 a.m. in the general vicinity. I'm not positive it's on that straight across or it's ever behind the high school, but I'm concerned about more dumpsters banging in the middle of the night, number one. And the other thing that came to mind when I heard about this, all around the country, you hear about adult-themed businesses moving into industrial areas of cities because they don't want these adult-themed businesses on Main Street. I think Sharonville experienced that within the last two months. It was in the news. And they scrambled to get them off of Main Street into an industrial park. And the reason why I'm up here specifically, more than the dumpsters, is I don't care to have any better of a possibility that that type of business, I'm pro-business, but I'm not pro-adult business. So I'm just here to speak to you and to Crestview Hills. You know, whatever you can do to prevent those type of businesses, we are right off the I-75 corridor, and we are ripe for the pickings. I haven't heard of any adult-themed businesses in Kentucky, northern Kentucky. I don't know what is preventing it, but whatever you're doing, keep it up. Thank you.
Sir, I can address that as one. I can assure you that we do have part of, there is an adult section in our zoning. It is not behind your house. It is not on Kentland Road, so you do not have to worry. You do not have to worry about it. It's in either one of those zones.
That was, but maybe the first thing that popped in my mind is right after this Sharonville thing.
Yeah, it's way out in a very small area.
All right, next up, we have George at Nordlow. Okay. Then Diane Brown. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I came this evening mostly to answer questions as Erlanger's representative on the Kenton County Planning Commission. I wanted to be available if you all had questions. I have a few comments, though, that have come up through the night. Good zoning, like good fences, makes good neighbors. This is an extremely difficult area because it is a transition from not just one type of industrial to a different type of industrial, but from an industrial zone to a residential zone. The zoning already puts in place extra protections to make sure that that residential area is buffered in some way from the resident, from the industrial area. But there can't be anything that completely insulates them from an industrial area. In reviewing the testimony from that night and hearing what went on tonight, I think there were several things that came up that really were of concern to the Planning Commission that I just wanted to highlight that I've heard again tonight. The restriction on how high the building is and how high the outdoor storage can go was a major concern. There is nothing that prevents the outdoor storage and restricts it to simply a paved area. The zoning ordinance says that it is the side or rear yard, and there is a large grass buffer behind that building as well. It came up that evening as to who will maintain the screening. You've heard again tonight that there is concern with dead trees being removed, trees from ash borer being removed, and as time goes by, trees change. Who's responsible for maintaining that and being sure that it is maintained? Already, we're hearing that there is some noise and some of that industrial use leaking through from airport towing. To address the mayor a little bit, the buffer zones D was actually the text amendment that we approved just before we got to the map amendment, so that clarified some of that. However, it reduced it to a 50-foot buffer. It did come up again, however, that evening, that there's a further conflict in our Erlanger zoning code, so that it is unclear whether there is the buffer zone D, which would be a 50-foot buffer, a 75-foot buffer listed in the industrial zoning code, or a 10-foot buffer with additional trees and setback. So it's unclear exactly how big a buffer this property will have to maintain behind it before the residential area. So I just asked that you take a look at that. It sounds like there is some drafting that's going on that does address some of that, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Kyle.
It was my understanding when I watched the video that the 75-foot buffer was for the building itself, not for the other stuff. It's because one of your commissioners actually spoke to that. He looked it up, and he said the 75-foot referred to the building had to be 75-foot.
Setback.
Setback, yeah, that's what I'm looking for. And then the other thing, too, this is already IP1, which means these businesses can be there. So those businesses are going to stay no matter what. All we're doing is allowing them storage. And I'm all for, we've got an 8-foot height boundary here that we have to stick to, but I do think somewhere, I thought we had stipulations about the shrubbery, the trees that have to be kept up. I know we do when new buildings come in, and I'm not sure if we have that on this piece of property, but I'd be all for saying, hey, these trees have to be planted, they have to be maintained by the businesses for that buffer to be effective. But if you keep the storage down to 8 feet, which is, you know, a good size, I would think, since this is above the sightline of the houses, from what my understanding is, and if you put in regulations about the plantings and we're actually increasing the buffer from 40 to 50 feet, that should help. Now, I don't know about the towing company. That's not going to change. I mean, they're still going to be there. They're still going to be making noise because they've been there for a while. So I don't think we're going to get rid of anybody by not changing, by not changing the zone, is what I'm saying. The only thing I think we're allowing is the outside storage. Is that correct?
That's not actually correct. It is to a large extent, but it's not completely. The 8-foot height, this is the first, obviously, I had heard of it. I certainly, over my time there and being here tonight, I have wished the people from Zala and Kama's Pallett had been at our meeting. Lot of these questions could have been answered, and the vote may have been completely different if those business owners and occupants had been there to help us understand that. In addition, this is the first I've heard of the 8-foot fence. There is, again, that discrepancy on whether it's a fence and a tree buffer. There's just a tree buffer. It does describe what types of trees and bushes go in. That is in the zoning that was presented to us. As far as the uses, changing it from IP1 to IP4 does not change who is currently in the property we're discussing. It does, however, change the uses that could be in that property. Okay? So it does change simply that there can be outdoor storage on the side or rear lot of this subject property, but it also allows it, in the future, the additional use of auto zoning storage, just like airport zoning. And I think that's why you're hearing a lot about airport towing, because changing it to IP4 opens that door. So that if something should happen and the building become dilapidated again, or they decide to sell it, or these occupants fall through, it could be reused and repurposed again to expand the tow lot for a new towing area to go in. Once that door's open, there's no way to close it again. That is the one use that does change, and I think what we found on KCPC is we didn't feel that that one use actually met the comprehensive plan in saying that this was going to expand the economic basis. Again, if we had had our wonderful businessmen there, they could have helped us with what that necessity was, what the need that they had were, and would have helped us meet that comprehensive plan requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. All right, the last speaker we have signed up here is Serena Owen.
Good evening, Mayor, administration, city council, friends and family of Erlanger and all who serve Erlanger. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here and speak tonight. My husb, I'm Serena Owen. I'm actually a resident of Elsmere, but I'm also a family member of Erlanger, and I feel like I'm a part of the Erlanger family. Well, I just completed the municipal government academy, and it was amazing. And Becky said that she was watching tonight, and I just want to give kudos to her and everyone who helped plan that amazing academy. It was wonderful, very beneficial for the community. I'm a community advocate in Erlanger and Elsmere, also within the state of Kentucky. And my husband and I, when we moved to this area in 2010, we wanted to do something, we're a part of ministry in our church, and we wanted to do something like a community outreach to show appreciation to those who give back to the community and to also encourage others to give back and invest in the community. That's one thing I love about your city because you totally believe in that, and that's a part of your mission. And my mother's a resident here, so I'm here all the time anyway. But we started the Community Hero Awards, and we presented those awards during the Erlanger Heritage Day in September. And then your wonderful Mayor Hermes created a proclamation in November, and I turned around and I looked at the council who was clapping and applauding those who had received the Community Hero Awards, and I said, oh, my gosh, they don't get it. They're heroes, too. So I talked to Mayor Hermes. I said, I would really like to do something for your council and for your staff so that they realize that, so that you all realize that you are our community heroes as well. And so I just want to read, just because you don't, you don't do what you do for applaud or, you know, for recognition or anything like that, and that's why we appreciate you so much. But I just want to read a part of the proclamation and then also have something special for you in addition to that. So in Mayor Hermes' proclamation, he says, of course, this is something that we've done to express our gratitude, to honor community members for your selfless devotion in serving within the community. And you are one of the above-mentioned, and you've made such an amazing difference in the Erlanger and Elsmere communities by making a commitment to improve the quality of life of those who live and work here. You also perform collectively to provide exemplary service for our community with integrity and pride, recognizing the mission statement of the city of Erlanger. And I have a poem here. Now, I didn't create this poem. It is my mission to do so. So next year, when my husband and I, who, he's also a marine veteran and a retired teacher, and I'm also an educator as well, so I'm going to create a poem, but I got this from poetrygifts.com. It says, "Thank you, community heroes. There are heroes who walk among us, never looking for glory or praise. They don't seek recognition for their thoughtful, caring ways. Living lives of commitment to community, providing for those they hold dear. Steadfast with a quiet strength through tines of laughter and tears. You are a person like that to me and my community, the most selfless of leaders by far. So, community heroes, I'd like to thank you for being the amazing, wonderful, thoughtful, dedicated hero that you are." So you have a lot on your plate when you're caring for a community of other wonderful individuals and, you know, and serving within our best interests. So on behalf of the community, of everyone that you serve, and all the satisfied, you know, community members, I want to say thank you. Keep up the good work. Be encouraged, and we appreciate you. God bless you. I have a copy of this poem for you, and as our mayor and city administrator, no, Mr. Fields, I love photos, and we need a photo op real quick, if you all don't mind, if we can have, you know, our mayor and administration stay right there, if the council could fall in right behind them, and if we could get the rest of our... could fall in right behind them, and if we could get the rest of our, you know, community servants, our, our officers, and anyone else who serves within the city of Elsmere to come up and be a part of this, this photo, we'd really appreciate that, because we want to post you, you know, we want to brag on you and post this on our community Friends of Erlanger and Elsmere page, so if we could do that real quick, and I'm.
Would have had my hair done. Yeah, me, too.
And have some, I have some treats for you, too.
Then Serena was going to do that. Is that okay?
You're dead. You're dead, dude.
And we're set here. They're going to come behind us.
I was back in my chair. I'm sorry, I don't mean to run over you.
Yeah, let's go to the door.
I'll get him, I'll get him.
Very nice, Serena.
Okay, you ready?
Got to feel real safe with that thing, because it saw up on the screen.
Watch out.
I'd be glad to give up my seat.
Smart.
I gotta do us five.
On the count of three, why is your train on taking two?
Why is your train?
Thank you, Serena.
Thank you.
That was.
Okay, so we, we don't have anybody else signed up to, to speak this evening, but I always do open it up. If there was, if there's anybody else that would like to say anything, now's your opportunity. All right, with that, then, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our bids.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Beaux.
No, sir.
Okay. Old business, does anyone have any unfinished business to report? Seeing none, we'll move on. New business, is there any new business to report, to discuss?
I'm going to be a grandma again.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have you shown your kids that photo?
No.
Yeah.
We can get that framed.
They'll see it now.
I do have a question.
Okay, Mr. Burke.
For the camps, pallets, these photos, are they of your business now?
No, they're, they're still used.
Oh, okay. So you're, you wouldn't be doing eighteen feet here?
No.
Okay.
I was going to say, if that's the spot down here, you guys are out of code right now. Okay, thanks, that's all I needed, I appreciate it.
All right, so the next item on our agenda, then, is legislation. The first ordinance is the R1F to NC zone change. This is a second reading.
This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Erlanger, County of Kenton, Kentucky, for an approximate thirty-nine-hundred-square-foot area located on the southwest side of Commonwealth Avenue between Dixie Highway and Home Street, approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet northwest of Dixie Highway from R1F to NC neighborhood commercial. By summary, this was reviewed and recommended by the Kenton County Planning and Zoning Staff, as well as the commission, and this is a second reading.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt this? Motion by Mr. Howard, second. Second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All right, this calls for a roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next ordinance is the Renaissance overlay removal. This is a second reading.
This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Erlanger, County of Kenton, Kentucky, for an approximately fifty-three-acre area located on the north and south sides of Dixie Highway, bounded by Alice Street on the east and the Boone County line on the west, removing the RP Renaissance Protection Overlay Zone from the properties within the described areas from R1G, RP to R1G, R2RP to R2, NCRP to NC, and NC2RP to NC2. By summary, this is removing the Renaissance Zone Overlay from all of the zones in that old Dixie Highway Renaissance Zone corridor.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt?
Give me that.
Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second.
I'll second it, I should.
Second by Mrs. Sudcamp?
We should.
We were waiting for it.
Any discussion? All right, this calls for a roll call vote.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Third ordinance is the outside storage and buffer. This is a first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance to change an approximate thirteen-point-eight-four-acre area located near the intersection of Kenton Land's Road and Russell McClure Drive, approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty-five feet north of Dixie Highway in the city of Erlanger, from Industrial Park One to Industrial Park Four. By summary, and as indicated in the title, it simply changes the zoning map to indicate that the area described is zone IP four instead of IP three.
All right, Mrs. Hoffman, please let the notes reflect that this is the first reading of that ordinance. Next item is a municipal order, the OKI representative appointment. Are we, do I need to read this?
You can.
Do you have it? Would you mind? Okay, well. All right, a municipal order of the city council of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Councilmember Tom Cahill, Jr., as the representative of the city, to the Ohio Kentucky Indiana OKI Regional Council of Governments. Yeah, I don't think I'm going to read the whole thing here. Is that enough? Okay, so.
You okay with that, Mr. Cahill?
Can I get a, can I get a motion? Not disagreeing yet, is he? Say it quick, before he disagrees.
I'm good, yeah.
All right, so can we get a motion to accept this? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Howard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Why didn't you, he didn't approve.
All right, the final item of legislation is a resolution, towing to BP one, authority to file.
Yeah, this is just a resolution sponsoring a proposed zoning map amendment and text amendment, to have Mr. Han as the city's representative to make application for text and map amendment for the BP one zone, as was previously discussed, related to Smith Towing.
I'm sorry? Yeah, okay. All right, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Ms. Kyle.
Yeah, I think everybody raised their hand.
Meeting adjourned.